Exemplary people, and we're going to recognize John Kimball of the Kimball Group for his work assisting with the playground at Fawn Hollow. John could not be here this evening to join us, so Jim, did you want to say anything?
I would like to.
Thank you.
Back in the spring, early spring, it was decided that Fawn Hollow needed a new playground, and there were a lot of meetings that occurred with Mrs. Cosisco, Jack Zammery, Parent Council, I'm sorry, the PTO, etc., trying to figure this out. Playgrounds today are very expensive or deals. I mean, you run up into the mid 100,000s very, very quickly on these playgrounds to meet all the safety standards and those kinds of things. Through Becky's and Jack's efforts, one of the avenues that was pursued was, since Sandy Hook was leaving Chalk Hill, was could we take that playground and put it to good use at Fawn Hollow? That brought with it a whole set of other challenges, and so we had contractors come in and bid for that work, because, you know, there's footings, poured concrete footings at all of those big toys. They all have to be disassembled, moved without damaging them, et cetera. John Kimball came in and really came in with a great bid price that really ended up really not doing the work justice. The Kimball Group volunteered so much time going to meeting after meeting. John was onsite helping the crew. We had a lot of students who were employed by the group over the summer working on that playground. They went way, way above and beyond what was expected, and they saved Becky and the Board of Education a significant amount of money. John is a humble man, and he knew he was being recognized here this evening and didn't want the limelight. And so I said, "Well, we're going to do it anyway, John, and recognize you." So, thank you to John Kimball for all that he's done for the district. He continues to amaze me in his efforts to help us in keeping our costs low. Sometimes when we get into plowing issues, when we have heavy snows, he helps out with payloaders and things of that nature. So, it's a well-deserved thank you to John Kimball this evening.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Great, thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Great, motion passes. We will move on to reports of the committees and liaisons. I have a report from the Finance Committee, which met this evening. We discussed the turf fields update. For those of you who have not seen it on Facebook, the field is coming along and looking beautiful. I was able to tour it this past Wednesday, and it's just amazing in how much bigger it looks. I said it can't possibly be bigger, but the appearance is that the field is huge and is much bit bigger. So, we're moving along nicely with that, and we're hoping to, and we think it's going to be ready, October 1.
We actually have the lights on this evening down there at the request of the construction crew, because they come from out of state that are putting the carpet down. There's a lot of cutting and gluing and stitching that has to be done, and they want it to work until nine o'clock or so this evening, so we accommodated them. And it gives us an opportunity after the board meeting to go down and see what the lights look like in the dark. So, good work being done down there.
We also are going to be able to return some funds to the towns for our capital reserve account. It's looking like we're in the neighborhood right now of about 200,000. We still have a few outstanding POs that we have to close up, so we should know within it, by our next meeting, more affirmative number. But that's where we are about now. And then we talked about the MEA contract that we will be looking at and approving this evening, so I won't go into it here, and we'll wait till further in the agenda when that's up. Yes, Jeff?
Can I just say something?
Yes.
About the money being returned to the town?
Yes.
What I feel that voters should understand is, we didn't ask for too much money. You know, I don't want people to think that, "Oh, wow, they're returning money to us, so why are we giving them so much?" I think it was more the way Jim runs the school system, and all the administrators, they spend wisely. So, you know, it's important for the voters to understand that. Just because we have it doesn't mean we spend it.
Yep.
And that's a good reflection that every year we're trying to return some of it back, and a couple hundred thousand dollars is a big nut.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's very important for the voters to know that. When we put out a budget, it is airtight, but if we're able to save money here and there, it all adds up.
Thank you for that, Jeff. I will comment a little bit further so that there is clarity around the issue. The bulk of the money that was available for us to turn back comes because of unexpected maternity leaves, extended maternity leaves. When that happens, paying substitutes rather than full-time, you know, regular employed teachers, we generate savings from that. That's one of those unforeseen's that you really, you try to put a number in for that estimating.
Sure.
Pregnancies and all these other things, but sometimes you're wrong. And in this case, we were a little bit wrong, and it was to our benefit, so it worked out. If you remember last year, what was the number last year, Gabby? It was considerably lower amount.
Sixty-one dollars.
It was forty-six thousand, and there was an audit adjustment.
Right. Exactly. So, you know, it's going to move around every year, hopefully. I'm just happy that we're still on the plus side.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, we're still returning money.
Right. Yes, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else have any committees or liaison reports? Carlos?
Sure, I'll be brief. This is from the RISC. We met this past Thursday. Just a couple of highlights. Well, it was a quiet summer from the, they said it really wasn't that busy, so it was a good, quiet summer, and we were happy to report that. They did have their convocation on Wednesday, or I'm sorry, on Monday, the 29th. Ours was on Wednesday. And they're happy they did have a lot of new hiries, and they had folks that had resigned who had moved on to other districts and found that they had a lot of new hiries. They did have, they did hire, which pertains really, and it's great for us in regards to, hired four new language, speech and language pathologists that at times if we ever need to utilize, that they're willing now to share in regards to districts needing somebody, let's say on a part-time basis, or whatever the case may be, instead of having to hire full-time speech and language pathologists, so we can tap into their, tap into them.
Tap into them, nice.
So, that was just something that they did mention. I did follow up on something that we had mentioned here, as you've mentioned, Jim, in regards to the HR management piece. They did share that they don't, they do not want that responsibility. They will fight until the end to not have to do that. They already have their hands full, and they would hate to have to also. So, they did share that they are not looking for that, but they're not surprised if the legislators decide to do something that, you know. So, but they will keep their eyes and ears open and will inform us if that ever comes up.
Great.
And there was a change, I know that came up in regards to teachers and in regards to security check and fingerprinting that they mentioned, that they're keeping, in regards to new legislation, in regards to background checks for teachers. They mentioned that. I thought that was important to hear in regards to abuse of children, so they had mentioned that. Just kind of some highlights. And then I think pretty much they have a busy and full in regards to their enrollment, pretty full enrollment. And they're always inviting us, by the way, to their shows in regards to the regional, the RCA School, the Regional Arts School, Centers of the Arts there. So, we're invited to any time if we're interested in going to their shows to just look on the website, and we'll be their guests there, so. They are having a, which is a fundraiser, Ninth Annual CES 5K Fall Classic in Bridgeport, so if anybody's interested in, it's Saturday, October 15th. Again, raise money for their efforts there as well, so just wanted to plug that in as well. I think that was pretty much it. It wasn't really.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any committee or liaison reports? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Before I get into the listed items, there's two things I want to say. One is, thank you to Jeff Gutman for all the support that he has given us over the years that he's been on the Board of Education. Jeff has been a dogged participant in all of our negotiation sessions since he came on the board, and a lot of the inroads that we've made and the tenor and tone of those negotiations are largely attributed to what Jeff always brought to the table. Jeff, I will personally miss your camaraderie and the work that you do for the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Good luck in the future. Second of all, at your place, I also put down a letter that we received from Mr. Lamonica concerning his concerns with planning and zoning and the construction of a, this is actually the construction of a small, I think, six-house subdivision, not a quarry application, et cetera, but I put that there for your information. Feel free to read through it. At this point, at this juncture, I am not encouraging us to take any side in the matter until we know more about it. One of the, one of the other projects, I hate to keep going to the well, but everybody knows that we still are in the midst of doing roof projects in the district, and Stepney is the next roof project that we would like to do this summer. It's been on our capital improvement plan for a number of years. It's ready to go. We have engaged Garland to do some preliminary studies for us again. They did such an excellent job here in at Fawn Hollow that we wanted their input in this process again. But before we could even start the process and go to the Town Council for a bond, we need to put together some representatives, a small building committee for the Stepney Roof Project. I need a couple of board members to serve on that. I think the impact would be relatively minor, a couple of meetings in the fall, a couple, you know, winter and spring, probably a total maybe six meetings, Jack, would you say?
Sure.
To pull this, this project off and to bring a bond issue to Town Council for their approval, so that we can get this roof done as well. You know that the infrared scans at Stepney show that we do have wet sections on that roof. We repaired, if you remember, too, the roof over the cafeteria, which was very nicely done. In this study, there were some structural issues with snow loads. We have to beef up some structural elements on that roof as well, because they're a little undergauged for the kind of snow accumulation that we get there. We have to shovel that roof, those sections repeatedly in the wintertime. So, if anybody could serve on that, I would really appreciate a couple of board members' help in pulling this, this project off. Just let me know.
I'll go.
From afar. Okay. I received an email a couple weeks ago. This is at your place as well. It was the CAVE Board of Education Recognition Awards, and what they were looking for was feedback from superintendents on their Board of Education's roles and that. And they put together a survey of questions about the Board of Education that serves all the various towns and states, you know, in particular Monroe here. And so I started to fill it out, and there's a couple of things that preclude the board from doing this, because we don't have anyone on a leadership, in a leadership role at CAVE, and you need to have that. But I was amazed as I was going through the survey checklist, and that's why I give this to you, and I checked off all of the things that apply to this Board of Education. And I want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the leadership that you do, because John and I both did this in my office one day, and it is amazing the kind of support that you guys give the school district and the leeway that you give us to run the school district. And so, if you, if you take a minute and just look through the boxes that I checked, you know, some of them, you know, we take for granted. We say the Board has developed district goals for this year. The Board has conducted a self-evaluation. The Board has conducted a superintendent evaluation in the past 12 months. The Board monitors its performance against Board of Education Code of Conduct, et cetera. All of these things were easy to check off that you do as a Board of Education, and you're just, in my book, you're tops. So, thank you, everyone, for what you're doing. Technology at Chalk Hill. First Selectman has been talking with Jack and with I about the possibility of moving our technology person out, okay, just our tech guys that we share between the town and the school district, to the Chalk Hill facility. There's some upside to doing that. One of them is that we could have training sites, labs in there to train people. We'd have more space to have labs to repair and set up equipment and deploy equipment throughout the district. The problem that we have is that we don't know yet from the town whether the Chalk Hill is going to be there for a number of years going forward, okay? And so our reluctance to say, "Let's move our personnel over there," it's too expensive to move our tech operations over there. It'd be a million dollars or more probably to, Jack, we actually had an estimate on that price.
Yeah, the ballpark is about a half million.
About a half million, just to move the hardware over.
Right.
But, so we're not interested in doing that. That can stay in a stonehouse behind Monroe Elementary. But, you know, the moving staff over to Chalk Hill could be done. I think if there was a commitment from the town that Chalk Hill was going to remain viable for the next several years. So, I just want to bring you into the loop and make sure you're aware that those discussions are going on, and I certainly wouldn't do anything, make any commitments until it came by the Board of Education.
And would there be any monetary commitments by the Board that we would have to have our, pay for our personnel to be there?
That's a, that's a question I don't know the answer to. We don't know the answer to, whether or not we'd have to rent the space or not, okay? But those are the kinds of questions that we need the answers to. I don't want to, you know, deploy people over to a site. There's going to be disruption, there's going to be downtime, there's going to be setup time, that kind of thing, and then a year from now find out that, say, Town Council or another group at town says that, you know, "We're not going to operate Chalk Hill." So, I think until we get some kind of assurance about longevity there, it's a diffy proposition.
Yep, sure.
Who, who would we get that answer from? I mean, is that, is that Selectman Babrick? Is it Town Council? Is it a group?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's a fair answer.
I think it's all of the above.
Okay.
The Bridgeport Magnet School tuition, we received a letter from Bridgeport in the past legislation. They were able now to charge for magnet school students at Fairchild Wheeler and at...
Discovery.
Discovery, right. We have about 10 kids now attending Fairchild Wheeler, and the tuition would be about $3,000. So, we're looking at a bill for that magnet school, starting in the 17, 18 school year of about $30,000 liability to us. Other towns have it far worse than us, okay? Trumbull has an exposure right here upward to $300,000. Stratford has an exposure up to $500,000. There are towns around that are very upset about this, and Gabby received an email today from some of the business managers that want to form a coalition to try to petition the legislature to, you know, undo this. This is the classic, this is the classic unfunded mandate, okay? It's a way that the state could shave their responsibilities, in my estimation, for these, for these operations, for these schools, cut their budget appropriately, okay, and push the cost right down to the local level. So, I'll keep you posted as we go along with that one as well. But our exposure is relatively minor, but nevertheless, it's an exposure, and we've been trying to scrutinize every penny that we can save, and here's another 30,000 that suddenly falls in our lap. And I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody have questions, Alan?
Any enrollment updates?
It's on the agenda for presentation. I'm just going to take a minute and review that with you.
Okay.
Anybody else before we move on to the presentations? All right, we will move on to presentations, and first up is the introduction of our new staff and reports on the opening of schools, and who would like to go first?
I think maybe Joe.
Joe will volunteer, yeah.
And I wish, I wish I could introduce her to Tammy Johnson, who's our new special education teacher that backed Trumbull a few minutes ago, that she got stuck in her own child's back to school night. So, she's not with us today, but she's not with us tonight. But, you know, what I would like to say, you know, just about her for a second, we've had three summers in a row where we've had to hide, we've been in an unusual position of trying to find a special education teacher late in the summer, and I have to say, we've had three home runs in a row with the folks who work in the hallway, and I think Tammy as well. Tammy's going to be a great addition to our special education staff. Talking about enrollment a little bit, Alan. We opened our doors to 1,064 students. That includes 19 students, or doesn't include 19 students that did not come to Massey from Jackie Hollow. But, very interesting, a big, the majority of students that didn't come to Massey this year went to Abbott Tech. But those numbers were mitigated by 27 new enrollees that enrolled over the summer throughout all the different grades. Mark, Jewel, and myself will sit down with those 27 new kids within the next few days. We do pizza with the principal with those kids in the first few days, just to help them acclimate and see how they're getting along and making their way through the new school. I'm sure my colleagues are going to say the same thing I'm going to say, but the start of our school year was tremendously smooth, and it starts with our bus company. They've done a great job. At first day of school, our buses were here by, I think, about 7:15 for a 7:25 start when the last bus was here, which is, which is great. One of the things we've done in the past, the past two years, but especially this year, is we've condensed down the amount of time that we spend in whole-class meetings on that first day of school, and then in advisory, and we kind of get right into it. And the one thing I was just taking back with as I walked the halls the first few days, but especially the first day, was the amount of instruction that was going on. It was just a seamless transition from, you know, from last year into this year. Couple of things coming up, you know, I'm sure everyone in here is very familiar with the opiate epidemic that we have in our country, not necessarily in this town, but we're definitely not immune to it. Next week, we have two events going on. Jim had sent out, and I think it was from the DDA and some other task force, a video in late June called "Chasing the Dragon." All the kids will be watching that on Tuesday. And then I didn't invite any of you, if you want to come on Friday, to, Chris Heron is coming to speak to us. Chris Heron is a former NBA basketball player who tells what this horrific story he had. He grew up in Massachusetts, you know, his dream is to play for the Boston Celtics, and here he was, you know, three minutes before the first time he was going to step on the court at the Boston Garden, and he was running out to meet his dealer out in the parking lot behind him. He has a very compelling story. I've heard him speak before. On a much lighter, you know, I went to public, I went to school in Monroe for 13 years. This is a little over 20 years in public education, and for the first time, I met her on the first day of school, I had sushi for lunch. Our new changes in the cafeteria are very welcomed by both staff and students alike. Couple of cool things coming up this Friday at 7:00. Our students last year, our orchestra and string students last year went to Germany, and they met up with a student group there, and they did a combined concert. Well, this Friday at 7:00 in our auditorium, that group from Germany has come over here with our students, and they're putting on a concert here. And then another thing I just think is kind of cool, Saturday morning, I'm running tours at 11:00 for the class of 1961, one of the first classes ever at Massey, so. But it's been a great opening, very smooth. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And you're welcome with the sushi.
I have a question. When, what time is that speaker coming to Massey on Friday? And is it the order?
It's the 16th, and he will be starting at 9:00. And it's going to be a whole class, a whole school assembly in the gym, because he was very expensive, and if you had to do it twice, it was twice the price.
I guess I'm the next youngest? Does that have this? Yeah, on September 1st at Jackie Hollow and at the STEM Academy, we were thrilled to welcome 785 students to the two campuses. That number reflects 33 students joining us new over the summer, which was a wonderful addition. On top of that, we welcomed certified and non-certified with transfers, et cetera, in district, 18 new people working with us at Jackie Hollow and at the STEM Academy, which is just an unusual number of employees to join us, which is, which is great news. And it's my pleasure this evening to be able to introduce to you three new certified teachers who are new to the Monroe School District. Jaclyn Flynn, and Jackie is here, and I assure her that not only would I mention her teaching social studies in 7th and 8th grade, but she is our varsity field hockey coach at Massey, hence she has just run through.
I don't come to work like this.
Lauren Hilmarbrager, who's joining us at the STEM Academy, she's teaching Spanish. And Minju Park, joining us at main campus, teaching math in grade eight. So, welcome to them. They have already hit the ground running. I agree with Joe, and our staff has said it no time's not. It's almost as if we, we didn't stop. We didn't lose a beat. We came into school and we're off and moving, and there's instruction going on, and the kids are getting settled. Great start. I would love to mention to you that the year really started in July. We had another summer, which is now, we're referring to it as the Annual Monroe Music Enrichment Program. It expanded this summer to two weeks. We included a camp for middle school and a camp for high school kids. We had over 130 students involved in July. Kudos go to Mike Martone for overseeing the program. August, we did, we had an annual Bring Your Own Technology workshop for parents and students. We've been doing that in over a year now, but I break it up tonight, because we had over 300 parents and students come to learn about BYUOT, to put their hands on devices, to bring their own devices, connect them to the network, so that they know how to work that, so when they came in the first day, they could, they could hit the ground running. It really is the largest number of parents and kids that have come out for that, for those two days of workshops, so that was great. It was really exciting to see. Echoing Joe's sentiments, we had a wonderful, wonderful start. It's really due to the work that we all do together, the parents, the students, the bus company. It just made for a very, very smooth opening. I can't say it better than, than an experience I had in the cafeteria. Our sixth graders came in, and one young lady walked up, and she had heard about the variety of choices in the cafeteria. She looked at me and she said, "Jackie Hollow really is the greatest place." Now, I'm sure she meant her classes, not that she could make five or six choices at lunch, but that was, that was her comment, and I'll take that was reflecting the whole school, not just the cafeteria. But thank you for, I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Sure.
Are you the next youngest?
I'll just come over here, so, Lauren, come on up. So, everybody can get a good look at Lauren Morrissey, our new kindergarten teacher at Fawn Hollow. We're so happy to have Lauren with us. And we had a fantastic start to the school year, and it started, Jack was talking about PD, but a week before our official start, there was a Columbia Homegrown Institute at, that took place at Fawn Hollow. There were almost 25 of our staff members who gave up a week of their time to come and learn about Reader's Workshop. It was absolutely fantastic, and that rolled into PD, three days of PD, which were equally as fantastic, and then our opening days at school were just so very special. And like Jack said, I really do think it was a reflection of all the planning and preparation on the part of many. Our students and staff came back to beautifully painted rooms. Our staff organized the rooms beautifully. We have brand-new colorful banners by the PTO. Our students, you would think that they never left for the summer, because they came back on that first day, and their routines, they were right into the routine and so happy to be there. And something that was really different and fun this year was, we have babies back in our school with the daycare program there, and I remember from my time at Jackie Hollow when the daycare was there, you know, that the childcare program brought a really special energy into the school. Well, Fawn Hollow already has a lot of that special, young, joyful energy, but, you know, bringing the daycare into Fawn Hollow added even more, you know, seeing that the children that come in in the morning, they might be toddling down to the gym during the day, they do have a little exercise, it's really special. So, we have one new teacher. It's Lauren, and we have a new SRO, Karen O'Donnell. Five teachers changed levels at Fawn Hollow this year. That's kind of a big change for us, but they're, they're excited, we're excited. I think it's going to be a great change for us. We have 517 students that we opened our school to, which is 17 more than we had last year, and everybody has these great new student numbers for the summer, while we, too, enrolled a lot of new students, 43 actually, which is more than any year that I've been at Fawn Hollow. You heard about our new playground? Really, I encourage you all to come over and see it. Our PTO did supplement what was at Sandy Hook, and it's this beautiful playground, and John was so thoughtful in citing it. It was kind of a challenge, because you had to avoid a lot of things that, you know, we didn't really even anticipate, so it's over on the side of our field. But it turns out, it's shaded for half of the day, which is really wonderful. it's shaded for half of the day, which is really wonderful because our old playground was in the sun all the time, so if you come, you'll see the majority of our students are now playing on this new equipment, and it just really does your heart good, good to see this. So that was a very nice addition. And to top off our opening, we had a special visitor by the commissioner. I don't know if you know that she did come to Monroe and actually Lauren got to meet her, and I think if I had been a first-day teacher, I would have been quaking in my boots, but she was very composed and carried out a conversation with her. It was just so, I was, I was really impressed with that. And, you know, not knowing what, you know, the commissioner, if she wanted to see anything special, she came and, you know, John was there too, and we asked, would you like to, is there anything special you'd like to see when you hear today? And she says, "Well, Monroe had really good math scores, so if possible, I'd really like to see what you do in math." And this was, you know, like quarter to twelve, and at twelve o'clock, most of the school is in lunch and recess, but it just so happened, our second grade at two o'clock, twelve o'clock was doing a math lesson. And so she saw a wonderful math lesson in Jill Silvestro's class, and it was using the book Prisanthemum and graphing names, and it was a very special experience, too. So we, we just had a great opening. Thanks for asking.
So this is Allison O'Grady, and we found Allison, and we're very happy we did. She's teaching now music at Monroe Adventure School. And it was great to see the building come alive after a quiet summer. It was really probably the quietest summer ever at Monroe. We didn't have any major projects going on, that's very unusual, nothing really, that was really big, we didn't have to fix anything really big, but it was great to see the kids come in, they were all smiling, and they were willing and happy to share their adventures from the summer. We had our kindergartners come in, we had twenty new students enroll. They kind of enrolled pretty much equally in all the grade levels, so we were happy to see that. Besides Allison coming in, we had our intern come in, we had a transfer from the high school into reading, so we had some, some people come in as well, but Allison was our one new teacher that came in. And it's really, as Becky said, it's really a tribute to the entire staff. You know, the secretaries work in the summer, the custodians work very hard in the summer. They do many things beyond what, you know, we even know that they do. They're constantly finding the things that are wrong, you know, throughout the year, and they take the time in the summer to do that. And, you know, the teachers all, they get ready throughout the summer, they're, they're constantly, and Allison was one of those people, and, you know, today I said, you know, I, John came into my office earlier today and I said, you know, Allison, she was our find. You know, today, a perfect example was there was a glitch in the schedule. I was walking down the hall with two of the preschool classes, and I said, "Where are you going?" And my teacher said, "Music," and I said, "Where are you going?" She said, "Music, first day of preschool." So they were both going to music, and that shouldn't have been. And so I said, "Wait a minute, I have to get ahead of you." So I ran into Allison, I said, "You have twenty-three preschoolers coming in on their first day." And she said, "That's okay, I can handle it," and she handled it. So that's what it's all about, you know, so we had three or four-year-olds, twenty-three of them all on the first day, and she handled it. But that's what, you know, that's what the teachers do, and we're thankful for that. And so we're happy that she's here.
Great, thank you.
We did not have a quiet summer at Stephanie School. We all, you include the Jack Cameron for those couple of days. We had a lot of things going on, I'm sure you're aware, I know, Jack, it kept you well rested a bit, but the turf, or the topsoil from the turf has come over to our building, it's been spread, it's been seeded, we have a new lawn up in the back. The students are not allowed to use it until next spring, okay? They're not happy with me, but they're doing, they're making do. The yellow bank, I know you're well aware of, it now looks great, you really should come over and see it. I was there, I think it was there Sunday to check on some new flowers and things like that, just to make sure the grass started to come up over the last couple of days. It's starting to look like all lawn, all the trees have been cut down from around the building, so it really looks great. I know the custodians did a great job, and I know my secretary and I saw a lot of things happen over the course of the summer. I did do an animoto, if you'd like a copy of it, just send me an email, I'll send it to you. I tell you what, it looked like, in fact, my first picture of my first slide was what a mess, because there was dirt and there was people, and you should have seen the construction, but now it's gorgeous, so please come over. But it was not quiet. The trees have been cut down in the back, in the backfield and on the, on the other upper field. We have room, we can see our backstop up top, so when they can play on the field, we're going to have a kickball game with the fifth grader from the staff that I'm really looking forward to for the springtime. We welcomed back four hundred and forty-seven students last week. Actually, it wasn't, it was four forty-four last week. We had three more today. We've had thirty-two new students over since June. And like Debbie said, they've been spread pretty equally amongst all the grades, the fourth grade got a little bit more than the others of those thirty-two, but with that said, come September first, everything was back to normal, everything ran smoothly. My line, I used to have the parents, I want them smiling coming in, I want them smiling going out, and they were doing both. And like my predecessors all said, a lot of education going on, a lot of good educational talk coming out of the classrooms, and I think it's because it was a ten-week summer, and I think the students were ready to get back in. I know the teachers were ready to get back in because they were, they were chomping at the bit to get back in their rooms, but it really was a great start. The hums around the building again, I like that noise, I love that pace, so it was just great to get the students back. I know the others have mentioned too, the bus company, I think they did an outstanding job, they did a lot of work over the summer. Come the second day, all our buses were on time. That's, to me, if I'm clear, the first day, usually you got a couple of glitches, but second day, we were back and rolling. So the only thing I have to add is I have to tell Joe, hey, ham and cheese the first day of school. Thank you very much for all your support and look forward to a great year.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Before we, before I go into the current enrollment, oh, I'm sorry, Kay, I'm sorry, that's right.
System-wide student support services, we also have new staff, some new faces, but Karen Brown is joining us from Stratford, she's our new ELL teacher. She's a point five in district, so she's in every building throughout the district working with our ELL students, so we welcome her. Jen Parcell, as you know, is the new instructional leader at Massacre, and then Darlene Fencer is the new assistant director of student support services. We've also had kids moving in and out, but enrollment-wise, from last October to as of two-thirty this afternoon, we are up eleven students in the student support department, so our numbers keep growing with people moving in. We do a moving out, but they're also moving in, and some of the people that did move in were very gracious to say that they heard about the services of Monroe, and that's why they were moving here, so kudos to my department and the staff that came in.
That eleven is a net increase that Kay is speaking about. Before I, before I show you the projections that we have, I got notified today of the release of the CMT and the capped science results from last spring finally hit the, hit the news today, okay? And I want to say that our three elementary schools combined, okay, all three of them were in the top twenty-nine schools, elementary schools in the state of Connecticut in their scores. All three of them were in the top twenty-nine. There's five hundred and eleven elementary schools in the state of Connecticut, okay? That was awesome. Our middle school, our middle school was thirty-first out of two hundred and eighty-five schools in the state of Connecticut. You could clap for that, too. And our high school was fifteenth out of two hundred and eleven schools. You've heard me say it before, I'll say it again, there's something magical happening in Monroe, okay? This is just unparalleled success. I was going down all the towns looking for how many schools in the state of Connecticut, what districts had schools performing in the ninety-plus percent on the, in the fifth grade, and they were few and far between, few and far between. I mean, some of these, some of these urban districts in particular, they struggle with this, you know, are in the five and ten percent range, and here we were over ninety percent for all three of our elementary schools. It really shows some dedication and effort on, on all the people involved, so thank you very much. Our current enrollment, John, if you could pull that chart up, we don't need to move that, I think we can just turn here. This is premature data, okay? This is premature data. We always wait for the October one enrollment, okay? That's the legal enrollment date, all of our data for the year is based on October one, okay? But I found it a little unusual this year and wanted to kind of get a handle on what was happening. And you can see the two thousand and fifteen enrollment numbers, October one, two thousand and fifteen, we had three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven students in the district. The Mylone and McBroom projected enrollment for this year, remember there were, when we did that study two years ago, there were three projections, there was the low, the medium, and the high, and it was recommended that we stick with the medium enrollment projection for our planning purposes. That number was three thousand ninety-two students for this school year. Our actual enrollment as of August twenty-ninth was three thousand two hundred and fifteen students. So not only are we forty-eight students over what was in district last year, we're a hundred and twenty-three over the projected from the Mylone and McBroom study, okay? So how do, you get a sense of this in the summertime when you hear secretaries talking about, oh, another new registration, another new registration, another new registration, and I do the ones that have unusual living circumstances, and I was getting a lot of new registrations as well. And so we, we are definitely up, and we're going to have to take this into account, you know, in our planning and budgeting for next year because I'm going to have to go back to Mylone and McBroom and ask to give them this data now, this new enrollment data, and have them redo their projections so that we can get a handle on this. Is this a, is this a real estate event happening in town? Are people, are houses selling and families moving in? Shannon's nodding her head, yes.
It's crazy, so many closings this summer, yes.
So, you know, that's something that we always said, you know, proximity, Monroe has great proximity to urban centers for employment purposes, and, you know, when the market's right, people are going to move to Monroe.
Well, if the schools are doing good, it's going to be a more desirable community to move into as well.
We take all the credit for that.
But it's true.
But just thirty alone is kindergarten, that's a huge.
Yeah, that's a big number, because that's going to progress through the grades now for the next thirteen years, you see, that kindergarten enrollment number. So, yeah, this is, this is very interesting data, we're going to spend some time with it, but, you know, like I say, it is a preliminary, let's wait until October one to really get to the bottom of it, okay? Any other questions about that?
Great.
Great, thank you.
All right, we will move on to old business. We have the approval of the updated two thousand and sixteen-seventeen rates and fees. The last time we had approved this, there was an error on the substitutes, correct? So we have to re-vote for the whole fee schedule, it's the last page in your packet for that change and the correction for the substitute teachers. So do I have a motion to approve the updated two thousand and sixteen-seventeen rates and fees as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, do you have a second? Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? Jim or Gabby, do you want to?
We're just apologize, we, we had the wrong numbers in, on the substitute pay, so.
It's the eighty-five dollars?
What's that?
The eighty-five dollars, the substitute fee? I thought that's what it said.
This is the correct numbers here.
Right.
In the original, what were they?
I thought seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
Oh, it was the old number?
Yeah.
We had approved it in the budget at eighty-five.
Right.
Missed it on the schedule.
Right.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the updated rate and fee schedule? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to new business, and that's the teacher contract ratification. Jim is going to walk through this with us. The teachers did ratify on Wednesday the contract, so they've already approved it. This evening, we will ratify the agreement that we've reached with the teachers, both Jeff, myself, Shannon substituting, served on this, and Jim can go into more detail on what our negotiations came out with.
First of all, I'd like to say that our Board of Education was dedicated to the strategy of containing future costs as they have over the past couple of years. I will tell you that the negotiations were very professional. We had hard discussions during the negotiations, but it was always professional. I want to thank the Teachers Association for that as well. It's never easy to put items out there and discuss them. You come at things from two different angles, it's always a bit of a struggle in reaching an agreement. I think getting to an agreement at, I think it was two-thirty in the morning that night.
It was, two-thirty in the morning.
With mediation.
Two nineteen, actually, two nineteen, yeah.
I, I was thankful that we had gotten to that place because going to arbitration at that point, we would have been going to arbitration over really small dollars and potentially could have spent more in arbitration than we would have gained in arbitration, okay? So that's always the, the difficult spot that boards and the associations are in at that point. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through the changes. First of all, what you're looking at are the financial impacts predominantly, however, there were numerous agreements that were made in the contract language. There were references to nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen seventy-one, and there was a lot of old language that predated some of the current labor law, okay, that needed to be fixed up and cleaned. All of that will come to you in another form in a red-line version of the contract, but it's really this substance, I think, that everyone is most interested in, so let me go through that. First of all, it is a settlement. We're starting on the side of the page that says the summary of the collective bargaining agreement with the MEA, okay, that, on this two-sided sheet that you have in front of you. First of all, it is a three-year agreement, two thousand, July one, two thousand and seventeen to June thirty, two thousand and twenty. The wages, for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, there is a two percent general wage increase plus a one-point-three percent step increase for a total of three-point-three percent. In two thousand and eighteen-nineteen, there is a two-point-two-four percent general wage increase and a one-point-zero-six step increase for a three-point-three-three percent increase. And in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, there is a two-point-four percent general wage increase and a nine-tenths percent step increase for a three-point-three-three percent. Please keep in mind that there are a hundred, there are two hundred and seventy-eight teachers represented by the MEA, one hundred and seventy-three of them are at maximum step, so there is no step increase for them. So the general wage increase is their increase there, okay? We decided that there would be a zero percent increase in the longevity, there would be a zero percent increase in any extra-duty stipends during the duration of this contract. Insurance is always the counterbalance, medical insurance is always the counterbalance to any wage increase that's out there. We had an imperative to try to contain our costs in medical. We've been very successful at this over the years. Our teachers are paying some of the highest premiums and some of the highest deductibles than any organization in the state. So we again made inroads into the health benefits, going from single and family deductible of two thousand, four thousand, we went to twenty-five-hundred, five thousand in that deductible. And then in the employee premium share, we stayed level in year one at twenty percent, and we raised it one percent in two thousand and eighteen-nineteen, and it stayed at twenty-one percent in two thousand and nineteen-twenty school year. One of the big initiatives of the Board of Education, we had a liability in the contract in the form of personal leave days called family critical ill days for immediate family members. Those critical ill family days were not capped. They were five critical ill per family member, okay? So there was quite an exposure there for us. We got that capped at five total, which we think is a great savings. We clarified the preparation periods for elementary school teachers at two hundred and ten minutes per week. There was a grievance procedure set in place on the medical where things could be grieved up through the Board of Education and onto arbitration. We got that capped at the level of the superintendent. It could no longer be grieved beyond the superintendent, which I think is significant. We made the teachers co, the teachers' salary pay, pay periods coincide now with our year-round employees so that we don't so that we don't have to do double runs on payroll. It makes it much more efficient in Gabby's department to get all of that work done. The last benefit, that was a future liability in the form of retirement payouts, okay, was capped and sunsetted in this contract. The last retirement benefit that was still left in the contract was a sick-day buyback for sick days beyond 100, but less than 160, okay? So it's a liability of 60 days at a per diem rate of $250 per day. That's a $15,000 liability for every teacher. Okay, that is now sunsetted and will no longer exist with the hiring of new people starting in July 2017, okay? Now, just to give you a sense of the value of that, that's about $150,000 value per year when you retire about eight teachers a year, which is the normal retirement, okay? And then again, there were numerous language changes that we cleaned up the contract. It's much cleaner, easier to read and to understand. If you flip the page, let's talk about the economic analysis and how it really falls out here, okay? In year one, the increase is an $812,745 increase over the current budgeted amount of $24,406,762. You can see year two is compounded at $839,000 and change, and year three at $867,000 and change again. Now, if we had kept, I'm sorry, changing the deductible on the medical has a net impact of about a 6% savings to us in year one of the contract. That's a significant number. If we recognize that the base allocation for this current school year is $4,594,900. Ovation was telling us that in the next three years, we would experience a 9% increase trend for each year compounded, okay? So if we took our base this year and we did it 9%, our liability in the first year of this contract for medical benefits would have been $4,972,802. In year two, it would have been $5,384,000. And in year three, it would have been $5,833,000. With the savings that we generate from the increase in the deductible, okay, what we end up with is instead of a $4.9 million, we end up with roughly a $4.7 million. And you can see that in that chart midway down the page. You'll notice that our HSA contribution goes up, but that's because we increased the deductible, and we're still funding that at 50%, and the employee is funding that at 50%. So if we take the savings in year one of the plan for the increase in the deductible, we save $191,587. In year two, if we take the savings from the deductible and the savings from the increase in the premium share, oh, I'm sorry, John has this up here, too, if you need to see it, back there, we save an additional $264,880. And in year three, we save an additional $297,630, okay? Now, if you break that down, that means the actual cost, you know, that 3.3% increase in the salary that we talked about, really comes down in year one to a 2.55% increase in total package, okay? In year two, it's a 2.28% increase for the employee, and in year three, it's a 2.19% increase for a grand total over the three years of 7.51%. Okay? Is that understandable to everyone? Is there any questions that anyone would like to ask at this point?
I'd like to add that we came in way under what they were expecting us to be at.
Yeah.
You know, the Board of Finance.
Right.
By almost 2, almost 2.5%.
Right. We, you know, there's a number of things that go into an arbitration panel settlement, and one of the first things that the arbitration panel is going to look at is what are the average increases for these years that have already been settled by other districts, okay? And so I can tell you that we were below average, okay? The 3.33 is below the average in the state. So we had a real liability sitting out there. The only way for us to make any inroads and to make any savings, I think, was to really go after the medical...
Yep.
And make sure that we contain those future costs down the road and offset the salary increase with the savings from the medical. And I think that we were very, very successful in doing that. And so my recommendation to the board would be to ratify the agreement and go forward because I don't think that an arbitration settlement would be any better.
No, especially with what the mediator was telling us and the other negotiation she had and everything.
Yeah.
I mean, this was a very favorable contract for both sides.
Right.
You know, because, you know, one thing I know I take into consideration, as I know you do and you do, is that the teachers have bills to pay, too, and they live in town, too, and they have taxes and everything. So this is all give and take. We gave in to a bunch of things that they really wanted, but they gave in to us as well. So it was a good contract for both parties involved. I really feel good about it. I don't feel like we stuck it to them or they stuck it to us. It was done in good faith with everybody.
A mutual sticking.
Yeah, yeah.[1238.33][1238.33](laughter)
Anybody have other questions about this contract? All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion to ratify the teacher contract as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. Any further discussion on that?
Just thank you. Thank you for putting all the time and effort and energy and dinners away from your family and staying up until the middle of the night.
We ate well.[1270.12][1270.12](laughter)
That's a twist of taste.
Thank you.
And we could still see after 2:30. I wasn't sure where the line was designed.
It was cold on the bike riding home that night.
Yeah, he rode his bike at 2:30.
Of course.
Madam Chair, with my recent retirement and my past affiliation with our association, I am choosing to abstain from the vote.
Yep, thank you.
I will add that we have three more associations to negotiate with this year, okay, through next summer. And the inroads that we made here are significant, and we will pursue those, now we can pursue those same savings with the other associations as well.
I think we need to come in as an independent contractor.[1316.33][1316.33](laughter) Dinner.
All right, any other further questions before we move toward the actual vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor of ratifying this contract? Okay, motion passes with one extension. Thank you. Do we have anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Second? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes, we adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. Gabby, I have a check for you.
Yeah, and Joe Cobza has the other check, hopefully.
I already have the other check. I have the big one.
For the check.[1366.12][1366.12](laughter)
Hi, my name is Kim Henderson, and I'm from Monroe Newcomers. We'd like to present the Board of Ed with a $2,400 check allocated to all three elementary schools from an event that we did this spring called "A Day at the Beach." The event was held at Wolf Park, and it was a free event for the entire town and neighboring towns to attend. It was very well received. All the funds raised were raised by vendors who came, and they were local vendors, so it was nice to promote the town as well as advertising. We had an advertising bag, so it was nice that we did this so that it was free for everyone to attend. It didn't cost anyone anything to be there. It was a four-hour event. We had donations such as we had DJ, we had a lot of kids' activities, we had free giveaways, we had a week of the YMCA camp at Camp Pepe, really nice stuff, and this was all free for the town and neighboring towns to attend. So we would like to present the $2,400 check to all three elementary schools, and we, you know, the principals of each school can choose to use the funds however they would like. We would like the funds to go to some kind of technology or education, of course, but it can be allocated to however the needs of that particular school, okay?
Great.[1463.12][1463.12](applause) Ladies, you have to get the group photo.
Yes, we're going to be on Facebook.
Oh. Come closer, come closer. Chan?
Hey.[1483.41][1483.41](laughter)
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.[1490.41][1490.41](applause) All right, our second presentation is going to be by the MASCIC Booster Club, and they're going to present money raised from their golf outing for the turf field, so Jen Aguilar will represent them.
That looks like a big check.
So actually, Jen Aguilar, 32th Serene Lane, so actually today, Joe, when I told Joe we were going to be here today, he said, "Oh, you're going to do one of those big checks." I said, "That would be funny, right? That would have been funny if I had time." I had time.[1547.41][1547.41](laughter) So I'm here representing the MASCIC Booster Club with Joe Ayanuti and Rich Cosmeti. Vic is on his way here. He wasn't sure where the meeting is. We had committed to giving $25,000 to the field project in the spring. Rich and Vic both committed that. I'm just the speaker. This was really them. This was money that they raised throughout the years that they wanted to give. We actually just had a golf tournament that we raised $17,000 at, so that UPS are anti, so it keeps us, we're good, so we can support the spirits as well as support the field. So we feel good about giving this check. We also want to mention that we've been selling bricks for the last couple months. We're really pushing it this week. Flyers are going to go in the Courier this week. They'll be in the Courier, and we have so far sold about $17,000 worth of bricks, which will be more money that will be going, that money is directly to the field, all to the field. So we would like to present you with this, so we can fill in the red tomorrow on your thermometer.
Joe?
Who's doing that?[1627.37][1627.37](laughter)
Great.
And thank you for all your work that you've done on the field on behalf of all the sports.[1635.54][1635.54](applause)
Joe, if you want to come up?
I need it.
Why don't you come up for this photo? Vic is here, great.
Jane, you should come over here with the check.[1653.83][1653.83](laughter)
All right, next item, which is not on the agenda for those who don't know, Jeff Gottman, this is his last meeting as he is moving out of Monroe and on to new life, and to present him with a little thank you gift for a few years of service to the Monroe Board of Education and wish you well.
Thank you.[1717.25][1717.25](applause)
And Jeff, if you want to just say something?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity from the town of Monroe, from the voters of the town of Monroe, to let me serve you for 11 years on town council and the Board of Ed. It's been an honor for me to do all this. If there was a way I could stay out of the Monroe Board of Ed, I would, but, you know, once you sell, you sell, and you have to leave. So I already got a call from someone in Bridgeport, and I denied helping right now because I'm still, like, my heart's still here. I wanted us down until the last available minute to finish the negotiations for the teachers' contracts, and that was my goal, and I was able to do that. And I just, really, just thank you very much. It's been an honor for me. So good luck to everybody. The board is fantastic. I couldn't be happier leaving from the Board of Ed just because it's been so wonderful for me, that it's just been a great experience. So thank you.[1791.12][1791.12](applause)
You'll be missed by everybody.